All right, I will call this meeting to order noting it has been properly posted and our media representative have notified. First item on the agenda is revision and approval of agenda. Take note that we have one addition to the agenda, item number four under all business. We will present district goals 21, 22, so that's in addition to the previously released agenda. With that, I will entertain a motion then to approve the agenda as revised.
So who?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there question or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is community and staff participation.
Well, today was a special day in Genoa City, we had our new staff orientation, so that's the crowd you see over on this side. Welcome. You are the capstone to the end of their day. So if we could have each of you just stand up, say your name and the position that you're going to be having in our district, that'd be great. Hunter, you can start.
Hi, my name is Hunter Olles, I'm going to be a student teacher this fall with Ms. Karen Bullock in the elementary school classrooms.
Hi, my name is Emily Burke, I'm going to be doing third grade student teaching with Ms. Florence Golecki, and then switching to specialized student teaching with Ms. Candy Warner.
Hi, I'm Ashley Beasley, I'm doing her professional for the special aid and then it's going to be middle school.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Nixon, I'm also a student teacher and I have the reverse of what Emily has, softly with Ms. Warner first and then squipping the third grade.
I'm Christina Nance and I'm going to be teaching third grade.
I'm Joel Alstark, I'll be your library media specialist for elementary and high school.
Hi, Gina Whitlock, I'll be reporting for the middle school area for specialized.
Hi, I'm Candy Odoman, I'm the sixth grade specialty teacher, which we are going to be working together as well as Ashley.
Hi, I'm Jessica Bartucci, and I'll be teaching fourth and fifth grade.
Kelly Cassidy, first grade.
Ellen Carpenter, School Psych and 60% here at both schools and then I'll be at 1% at Langston.
Nicole Ward, Specialized in Elementary School.
Last and now to your board.
And now you can go home.
Maybe that was the capstone.
Thanks guys, thanks for spending your day with us. See you guys next week, thanks for spending your day with us.
That you may have recognized Christina Nance and Jessica Bartucci, we're actually long since left our district last year. We pulled them into this on morning because they came into our district last year at a different time in some of those activities.
Do we have other staff participation?
No staff participation.
Okay. Do we have any community participation?
I just want to say it is so awesome to see all your faces and it's just really refreshing and I just want to thank you for the mask optional for our families, so thank you. Thank you for listening to parents and for giving what was right.
Other comments, participation?
Hi, my name is Vicki Larson, I am a parent of a incoming fifth grader here at Brooklyn Middle School. I was unaware that the decision has been to be mask optional, so I just wanted to really first thank the board for all the work that they do and it's not an easy job because you're not going to make anyone happy with any decision you make. I'm just curious if the board has considered just the two items in terms of mitigations and quarantine. My biggest concern is keeping kids in the building and the more mitigations we have, the better we're going to keep kids in school longer. I know that kids were quarantined numerous times last year with masks. My concern is without masks, you're going to be seeing more quarantine time and just students out of school. I'm not here to debate, I mean everyone has their own opinion, I don't enjoy wearing masks either, but if it means that my kid can stay in school longer, more often, then I would wear masks. The second thing, I don't know if the board has considered just the liability that you're putting the district at if something were to happen. If a student unfortunately got sick, especially when the CDC is strongly recommending, they're not recommending option, they're recommending universal masks. So, just my questions, I know you're not going to engage in conversation with me, but I just wanted to make sure that the board's really thinking about those two specific things. Thank you.
I'm Vanessa. Hi, so I just wanted to start, so my niece and nephew go to this school, it's not my children specifically, but it is children that I love dearly and it was really hard last year to watch my five-year-old nephew wear a mask outside. So I do appreciate mask optional, I'm still grateful for it as well. Couple of things though about the mask optional, you know, we're sitting here and we're really wondering like, should we go into masks and should we not? And there's so much information that we don't know, we just don't know if masking our kids is damaging their growing bodies and when it comes to liability, that's a lot of liability because I don't know who is going to take responsibility later if we find that this wasn't a good idea and that our kids have long-term effects from masking them, especially outdoors during recess. So I just would like to point that out, I was let, last week I was at the Lake Geneva Board meeting and I thought it was just really refreshing that the superintendent started the meeting off, or started his portion of the meeting off by just reminding the board of the working flow chart. So the community is what elects the board, the board then is what hires the superintendent and the superintendent then hires the administration. So we've had some surveys go out and it's 80% of our community is asking, over 80% of our community is asking for mask optional. And I just think it's really important to listen to our community because we're speaking, and we're speaking loud in ways, I wish we could be louder and, not specifically louder, I don't want to come here and yell, I just wish we had a little bit more people here to let you know, but that survey, it says a lot and I think that it's just really important to take that into consideration. The next thing that I would ask that be taken into consideration, we are, you know, like I said, we're sitting here on this verge of should we mask our kids and should we not, when there are so many things that we could be doing. One thing is, I would really like to see children not be given incentives like sugar. Sugar lowers our immune system, it wreaks havoc on our immune system. So if we're considering masking children, why in the world would we give them sugar as a treat? That just really, it's like, it's crashing the scales, it's not even balancing them. So I would also like for you to please take that into consideration. And I can't remember what else I wanted to say, so thank you for listening.
I think based on maybe the new hiring list answer may have risen, but I'm wondering if library and tech is going to be offered this year, as it wasn't last year, with that new hire and I'm guessing it's going to be back on the curriculum for the students. I am also happy for the options and making people personally responsible for themselves for the option for mask. I'll act as the first right now.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, this, I know you don't have to answer, but do we know the results from the survey? And I also want to say thank you for listening and keeping me informed.
So we're just, do we get to know what the results are before this will start? Do we, can we, can we be, can we answer that? We don't know if we'll get to know the results of the latest survey?
Remember that during the participation, the board can't interact.
Is there a time that we can get these questions answered, though, maybe after could we get some questions answered? Because I did have one more question, I remember the other thing I wanted to ask. At the Lake Geneva Board meeting, the nurses' report stated that out of 1,300 kids, they had three, three cases documented where children, you know, passed it to other children. So three cases out of 1,300, that's so low, y'all, that's really low. So I thought that was really interesting and I wanted you to know. But is there a time that we get to know that? If after, maybe can we come to the district tomorrow, the head office, would we be able to be seeing that?
You can always set up a time to come in and meet with me if you don't hear that information that you're looking for in the reports that are going to happen during this meeting.
Okay, that is a good, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I thank you very much for your input. We will move on then for tonight into our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the stuff.
Consent agenda.
Motion made and seconded then to approve the items on the consent agenda, is there question or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next then, we are on to new business for tonight, first item being personnel.
Six items in personnel, first the approval of the hiring of Kelly Cassidy for first grade.
Motion to approve that one, new one?
Aye, we hired Kelly Cassidy for first grade, decision.
Motion made and seconded, question or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The second is the approval of the hiring of Candy Ottoman for middle school specialized.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Candy Ottoman for middle school special.
Motion made and seconded, question or discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
There is the approval, as of approval for the hiring of Ashley Beasley as a specialized care professional.
I mean, I'm going to be hiring Ashley Beasley for a care professional? Second.
Motion made and seconded then, question or discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Looking for approval for the hiring of Gina Whitlock for a care professional.
I'll make a motion for Gina Whitlock for a care professional.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, question or discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Two more. Approval of the resignation of Jackie Bulwork, who was our library media specialist, she took a position in the Fox family, closer to her family.
I move for acceptance of the resignation of Jackie Bulwork.
Motion made and seconded then, question or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And finally, the approval of the hiring of Jo Del Sandler as our library media specialist.
I'll make a motion for hiring Jo Del?
Mm-hmm.
Joel Del Sandler for the library media specialist?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, question or discussion on that one? Hearing none, then all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Very good. Next item then is our COVID mitigation guidelines.
So up for our board approval tonight are COVID mitigation guidelines to get our school year started. They were posted along with your agenda. The masking policy recommending that we continue to stay recommended but not required, this is where we've been at since the beginning of June. Masks will still be required on buses because buses are still under that federal mandate till at least September 13th, so we're waiting to hear about that. Couple of other things, the physical distancing, students will be aware, they'll be encouraged to be aware of physical distancing if possible. Teachers will be mindful of choosing non-collaborative options when educationally appropriate, just to give some space when possible. For our visitors, volunteers, parents will be invited into school buildings for school events, meetings with teachers, volunteer activities that don't require direct interaction. And we'll revisit that idea of classroom volunteers at the October board meeting. We'll continue to do the same kind of contact tracing and communication that we were doing last year and communicate, one of the things that we did last year was we were real, whenever there was a case at either school building, you knew whether your child was in that class or not, so we want to continue to be upfront with those communication strategies. We follow the recommendations, the rule recommending that, the recommended, it's recommended that unvaccinated individuals quarantine, so we're recommending that. And there's some other guidelines with the quarantine that will be recommended. Number six will be the one that we'll really be working with our parents on and that's that way to stay home from school. Really having parents work with us as partners to keep kids home if they're not feeling well, especially for some of those symptoms that are more contagious. And then we'll continue with the cleansing, cleaning and handwashing sanitizing practices that were in place throughout our 2020, 2021 school year. And then as we've done the last two school years, as data changes, we'll monitor our practices and modify them if we need to.
And we will need a motion then to accept the COVID mitigation guidelines? Motion made and seconded, question or discussion on that item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is our nurses' report.
Just to remind you that our nurse's report is part of those annual reports that are required by policy.
So, for the 2020, 2021 school year. So, if we just look at Brooklyn Middle School, I saw 88 sick kids, 26 first aides, scheduled medication, I think about 18, only one as needed, and then there were 42 personal cares that happened that month. We contrast that with middle school, there were only 42 sick kids, 19 first aides, four as needed medications, no scheduled medications, only one inhaler and I diabetic except at this building, so I've had seven blood sugars and seven insulin for them. In October, numbers went up a little bit. Elementary had 96 kids, 36 first aides, 17 scheduled medications. We did have two children with lice, and there were 29 head checks, and then I did have a child that needed 65 personal care. In the middle school, we only had 31 sick kids, 16 first aides. We did not start giving medication on a regular basis, so 33 of those, one as needed, seven inhalers were given in October. So these numbers are lower than our 19, 20 numbers. Part of that, I think, has to do with families for keeping their kids home sick, or keeping kids home more and some of our mitigations that was going on. So November is kind of interesting to me, November is when we saw our highest COVID number, but our sick kids went down, so what I take that as is parents were keeping their kids home when they were sick. But still, at the elementary building, we had 40 mornings, six visits, 31 first aides, 16 scheduled medications. And at the middle school, it's 44, six visits, 24 first aides, scheduled medications of 17. We did four as needed medications, medications and four inhalers. Okay, so in December, our numbers went down even farther, we only had at the elementary building 29 sick kids, 29 first aides and 15 scheduled medications. We did, I did another 30 head checks because we had two students with lice again. Middle school numbers, six kids, 36, 25 first aides, 14 scheduled medications, seven as needed medications, two inhalers. December looked small number-wise, but I think that is our smallest number of dates, that's the month we're here, the smallest number of dates, so that makes sense too, and our numbers went down. In January, when we came back from break, elementary had 43 sick kids, 25 first aides, 13 medications scheduled, three as needed. The middle school, 32 sick kids, 22 first aides, 37 scheduled medications, four as needed, one inhaler. My diabetics came back to school, so we did 13 blood sugar checks and 11 as needed. This February came, numbers are down a little bit. Sick kids were 38, first aides 32 for the elementary building, scheduled medications, 18 and one inhaler. The middle school, numbers, 46 kids, 22 first aides, 26 scheduled medications, seven as needed, three inhalers, blood sugars were 21 and insulin was 3. And we had one head check, no lice, they're found. March numbers start to go up a little bit, 72 sick kids in the elementary building, 67 first aides. I attribute that to weather starts to get nice and when we're outside more, they tend to see more. First aides, unless it's icy, then I see a lot during that time also. Scheduled medications is 17. Middle school, 35 sick kids, 19 first aides, 19 scheduled medications, two as needed medications, one inhaler, sorry about that, 53 blood sugars, 48 insulin and no lice. April, numbers are up again and I tend to think that numbers went up as the months went on because families got comfortable. When we first went back to school, everybody was so afraid of COVID that I think a lot of families were listening. They were keeping their kids home when they had a cough or they thought they just had a cold or, or things like that. As the spring came, more kids would come down sick or come down with those kinds of symptoms and end up being sent home.
Oh, and do you think that maybe because the, like, parents were going back to work at that point in time too? I don't see that.
Yeah, I think for whatever reason, they were, they just got a little more comfortable sending their kids to school when we should have kept them home or, or like, and I'm not saying that kids don't have COVID, they do. Kids will have five to eight respiratory viruses a year. And it's really hard to know if this coughing child is COVID positive or do they have a respiratory virus, right? I don't know that, no one knows that unless they're tested, right? So, I think as parents, families got a little more comfortable in the world, they, they were sending their kids to school. That's why I think our numbers are higher in the spring than they were in the fall. And we'll also add into spring allergies, you know, lots, lots of people have spring allergies, but with COVID symptoms being so vague and broad, it's really hard to know what it is. And so we have to err on the side of caution, I guess. So these are our numbers for April. May went up at the elementary, it was interesting, in the elementary, we did really good COVID wise until after January. Once January hit, that's when we saw our COVID at the elementary building. Middle school, we saw it earlier on. So May numbers, we had 118 sick kids, 87 first aides, 19 scheduled medications, six as needed medications, two inhalers and one head check. Middle school, 38 sick kids, 29 first aides, 18 scheduled medications, seven as needed. We went to camp during May and because we were not overnight, I did not have the overnight medications that I normally do, so only two kiddos took them to camp. There were 49 blood sugars and 39 insulin and no head checks. And then we go into the couple days we were here in June. At the elementary building, I had five sick kids, four first aides, three scheduled medications. Middle school, only three sick kids, one first aide, three scheduled medications, some blood sugars and 10 insulin. Which brings us to total visits. Total visits for this school year. At the elementary, I had a total visit number of 1,381. Middle school was 1,204, or a total of 2,585. Now that is way down, the year before it was over 4,000 and the elementary normally is double what the middle school is. So these numbers are, are way down from previous years. But that, it's not to say that I was not a busy person. The COVID mitigation stuff. So with COVID, I normally got, started getting phone calls even before I came into work in the first two hours of my day, was just calling parents back, answering questions. My child was exposed, he just got a phone call from great uncle George and what do I do? So spent about two hours a day with that. Then I cut these huge lists that told me what children were absent, what they were absent for, if they were testing, when they were coming back. And with that, at the elementary building, I had to monitor, these are children, children or staff who were tested, quarantined, were positive, so monitoring those kids. I had 141 individuals for the year and most of that happened after January for the elementary building. Okay, at the middle school, there were 154 individuals that I was monitoring for COVID. Okay, I tried to really be a resource for our families and our staff. I had staff calling on weekends, I had families emailing me on weekends. So I would get, there were a couple times when I got the information on a Saturday that I had a positive student, I ended up going into work and banking all those quarantine phone calls. So there was one incident. So there was one incident, it was Saturday afternoon, and this mom was really mad at me that I was calling her. How dare I be calling her on a Saturday afternoon and why didn't I tell her on Friday? I had to explain to her, I found out about this an hour ago. So I am not supposed to work on Saturday. Actually, I had things that were planned, but I came in and I'm telling you, so you get the information as soon as I know. Which then helped calm her down a little bit. I had to do all the contact tracing for positive cases at school. As of October, public health put that back on the schools. So it wasn't coming that were contact tracing, it was a boss. So any, any positive case, any kiddo here, staff member, I had to do the contact tracing and then report up to come. So that was going on. I worked closely with what was coming, um, with the COVID nineteen situation and I collaborated with what was coming public health and Mercy Health for a vaccination clinic for our staff. So that's, that took up quite a bit. I don't understand why it just gets me to tell you this. Anyway, okay, other duties. So on top of COVID and seeing kids, um, I have to maintain immunization compliance reporting for all students. That was really hard last year. Kiddos who were virtual, their families didn't necessarily understand why they had to report their immunization. So normally in a year, I start out with about ninety non-compliant kids. And what compliance means isn't that they're vaccinated, it's they're vaccinated or they have a waiver on file. And, and I truly don't care which one you have. If you have a waiver on file, that's fine. If you vaccinate your children, that's fine. But I need to have one or the other. So what the state law says is if we are under ninety nine percent compliant, the following year, we must exclude our non-compliant kids. We are in that situation this, this coming year. So we are only ninety seven point four percent compliant. So at the end, it's mid, like mid-October, um, if families do not have their children vaccinated or have signed a waiver, they will come to school on that fortieth day and we will have to call a parent and say, you need to come pick them up and either get them vaccinated or sign the waiver. Now, I am contacting families way before the fortieth day of school. Legally, I have certain dates I have to send information out to. But that is a, a situation that we're in this year. Okay, I attend I E P in cycle four, um, with children with chronic health conditions. I teach the human growth and development classes for our seventh and eighth graders. That is my favorite part of my job. I, I actually bribe the eighth grade boys this past year, um, and they were phenomenal. They did a great job. Um, I had staff calling at home saying, you know what you're getting yourself into? Nah, I've done this before. You really know what you're getting yourself into. Um, I resorted to bribing and they did, they did phenomenal. They were my best classes, so, um, I also then, we didn't have field trips this past year, but we did have, um, the second half of the year, we did sporting events, um, with our middle schoolers. So when they leave the building, they need a medical bag, any medication that kids have at school needs to travel with them. They also, um, we need permission to transport, permission to transport forms and emergency contacts, all that information needs to go with them. And then I worked really hard at maintaining positive working relationships with parents, um, for kids age four K through age three, so. That, that is my report.
What did you do until you freeze out?
Um, yeah, I'm still working on that.
Thank you for everything you do.
Yes, very definitely.
Do you have any questions?
No, I talk to Heather all the time.
All right, then I will entertain a motion to accept the nurse's report for this past year. Motion made.
I answer fast.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a question or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Heather, thank you very, very much. Very informative. All right, next we move on to our, uh, fourth item under new business being days and hours of instruction.
This is the annual approval of the days and hours of instruction, um, really no changes from last year because of the class times for both buildings, the required number of hours, um, and how's our, how hours kind of matches up, so. See, there's a little bit of room, we usually have a little wiggle room there.
I will entertain a motion then to accept the days and hours of instruction for the coming year.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, is there a question or discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is to designate a school depository.
This is the annual process?
And we don't have any changes, right? Do you have that in front of you? We'll entertain a motion then for the designation of school depository.
So moved.
Yes, that be accredited. Motion made and seconded, is there a question or discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Final item of new business is our annual seclusion and restraint report.
So this is an annual, uh, process, although I said to Julia, the board will never recognize the seclusion and restraint report because it looks so much nicer this year with all the colors and the nice graphics, so thanks Julia for that. So you can see the, um, incidence of seclusion during the previous year at B E S, um, number of students that were involved in that, students that have disabilities that were involved in that, number of physical, uh, students with, number of incidents with physical restraint during the school year, both at B E S and B M in Lakeland, and then the number of students that were involved in that. So you can see at a glance, um, kind of what those totals look like down below. Nothing at the middle school, um, a little bit at B E S this year and then one at Lakeland with a student that, um, lives in our district, so that's why it's reported to us.
Any questions on the annual seclusion restraint report?
With the seclusion restraint report, do the, is there like a C P I training for teachers or? Yes, in fact, um, this week is, um, Wednesday is the day. Okay. Uh, and it, I'll talk for Julia, but she's standing back there in the pink sweater. Um, we're going to have one of our staff members, Kylie Warder, become a trainer for C P I, so allow the district trainer also join the board with Kylie on mail. And you should know, anytime there is an incident with seclusion or restraint, um, the adult involved fill out a form at that time, so all that gets embedded in that big report.
Any other question? We'll entertain a motion then to accept the annual seclusion restraint report.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there a question or discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we're on to old business then, our district goals for twenty one, twenty two.
So this is tabled last month, just so that, uh, the full board could kind of go look at the, the district goals before approval. Um, you can see, we have our four goal areas, student achievement, communication and outreach, um, employee engagement, workforce development, and board roles and processes. I tweaked the wording a little bit to, uh, update our benchmarks and all of the changes are in blue. So, uh, just cleaned up the language in that first one and, uh, we'll engage, uh, everyone listed there and ongoing dialogue, but our ongoing focus on student achievement, um, support the, and develops, support and develop programs and policies that support inclusive environment, inclusive environment. And the second goal, we'll work with other community agencies to support shared events and communication efforts, so that some of the work that began to. The, in goal three, working with the qualities of a workwood employee and really helping staff to, um, envision what that looks like and kind of speak to that. And then in board processes and role development, um, I just combined Neola and ex, outside experts into one bullet point, so the first was kind of a language change. And then, um, including hosting outreach opportunities with the larger community along with finances and taxes bullet point. Because we talked after our referendum listening sessions this spring to continue to do some ongoing listening sessions with the board throughout the year, so that kind of speaks to, to them.
So we're ready then, this month, to entertain a motion to accept the district goals for twenty one, twenty two?
I will accept the district goals for twenty one, twenty, twenty two, seconded.
Motion made and seconded, question, discussion or comment?
No, I hold the table.
I think they're very good. It'll lead us to some directions. Any other question, comment, discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next then, we will move on to our communications and reports, first being our facilities director.
So you notice, uh, another entry into the communication reports thing, um, column. Bill's gonna share with you some information about summer facility work.
Will that automatically engage, huh? No?
Yeah.
I know.
It's such, it's such a bonus.
Oh goodness gracious.
You want the remote? Can you snap it?
Ooh, I think the remote's out of battery. I mean, you know, I'm starting to sweat.
Oh, we watched.
Do you have a memory?
I have a reair.
I'll email Helen since we're streaming up.
Could you do that?
Yeah, make sure you email it to me. Wait, is it you? Oh, no. Yeah, or Sharon and Kevin.
I can be your man.
Okay, so I can unplug in everything now. Okay, I call it summer fun. So, uh, good evening, everyone, thank you for having me. Most of the time I'm in here asking for resources to do these projects, so I get to show you a little bit of what I've done this summer. You can scroll up to one, Kelly. So water softener was one of our projects that, uh, we wanted to get done. Uh, the old system was twenty years old and tough shape and, uh, this is very important for like the boilers, the dishwasher, all your, all that stuff. And I mean, you, you need with soft water, it really wreaks havoc on the system. So to get this replaced was huge for me, uh, I felt it was very important. So we had Helen Brand come in and install it, they did a great job in a day and you can see the result here, it's, it's a nice system. It's a little smaller than what we had, but with the four units, they work in a line. And Kelly, if you can scroll up one, please? And they're, they're all controlled by that central computer I talked about when I was in the meeting last May or whatever it was. So what it does, one's working, one's in standby and the other two are there and as water flow increases, they'll come online and work as in a cycle or a, you know, a system, so. So that was one project that I was happy to have, please, Kelly? So we also talked about carpeting, uh, four or five wing for the safety. Kids coming in the wintertime, wet feet, that was V C T tile. And we used to have mats up and down here, but kids step off those mats and it, it turned into a kind of a roller rink ice skating rink. So this product is what we ended up with. It's like super heavy duty, like debris removal and salt removal, it's easy vacuum, easy clean, and, uh, it just feels great on your feet too, it's like a scrub brush you like walking on. So it, it, it's really cool. So the, the point was, you know, we wanted to make it safe and yet preserve our gym floor, so you can see it leads on the left there to the gym and this is out down this hallway, so. Uh, we had Lippard Floor and Tile installation, great people to work with, you know, did exactly what they promised, so Kelly. So we had some left over, so I approached Kelly and I said, what if we did it in the front up here, you know? You know, we have the mats up here and alls it would be was the installation, so they came in and, uh, put the inst, you know, installed the carpeting and I just think it adds a little pop to it when you walk in, plus the function, so I, I was really pleased with it. So, next slide, please? So then the next project, we had, uh, gym floor resealed and that's kind of a semi, or every other year occurrence, we, uh, about three years ago had the floor totally sanded down, re-lined, re, you know, a new emblem, a wording. So it, it was due to have it resealed, so they come in and buff it all down, remove the sealer and reseal it and it looks like a brand new gym floor. Next. So we also did some, uh, maintenance on our backboards. Uh, this has been kind of years in the making where the inspections, like you should be starting to look at this, starting to do these things. Cable, there was some worn cable, the actual winches pulling it up and the pulleys, so we had all that replaced and then the backboard padding was coming off in some spots, we had that replaced and we kind of hit black to match the stripe there and it gave, gave a nice sharp image to the gym, so. That was all safety as far as the cabling and stuff, so it was work that was gonna have to be done and I wanted to have it done before something happened, so. Next slide, please, please? So, uh, kind of annually, we add mulch to the landscape beds to kind of keep them up and so that was one of our projects, I had landscaping or mulch brought to the middle school and the elementary school, all of that's were mulched and, uh, it just gave it a really nice appearance. So, uh, we still do have floors that need waxing, so, um, we, uh, had a company come in and that's our normal vendor and they're another company that's great to work with, they're clean power out of Alcorn. And this is the art room and you, you know what the art room looks like after a year of art, this is what it's starting as. So I mean, they do a really good job of getting out all the paint and the stains and scuffs and so they did the whole building where it's V C T, so science labs, corridors, uh, the cafeteria and the stage and they did a really nice job. Next. So, uh, this year, we decided to, uh, to have the carpets professionally cleaned, we had some changes in custodial as far as their schedule, uh, one custodian wanted to take some more time off, so we, we reworked her schedule and, uh, we had a, um, service master And we had a service master come in and the owner actually did the work. And he was so quality oriented and easy to work with and just a really nice guy. And about a week and a half, we had both buildings done. So I mean, he really came through. The nice part about it, he steam cleaned everything, so that's pulling out all that stuff, plus it's kind of disinfect and sanitized, fresh start to the year. So that that was something I I think I'd really like to do on a yearly basis. He just comes in, comes out, you know, gets it done, and it just looks so much cleaner. Next slide, please? So the last project was the elementary roof repair and steel siding. We unfortunately had to wait for materials. So they were put up on the roof last week, so the materials are here and they are supposed to start tomorrow. So that's where we're at with that project. I'm very excited. I've met with the guys. They've been out. Very nice foreman leading the crew, so yeah, so.
What, ten days before school?
Yeah, they're talking ten days. So their goal is, yeah, they're busy as all get out, too. So they're, they got a crew mobilized and, you know, ready to go, so. Yeah, yeah. They were talking like when we started talking about this like four to six weeks and it ended up being, I think they got the materials in at the beginning of August. So yeah, so that is my report. Does anyone have any comments, questions? Yeah, thank you. I appreciate.
Great bonus up front here as well.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I'll go first here. Just been busy putting together the in-service time. And today we actually went out to Camp Wonderland to see one of the in-service spots there to make sure we have everything planned, finalizing those enrollment numbers and looking forward to registration night coming up on Wednesday. And just working with our new teachers that were here is a great evening and a great day to spend time with them and get them onboarded in a in a nice setting and great way. It was nice to be able to have time aside to talk to them, you know, and before it was just let's get going, go on, go on, get to know who they are and hear some of the questions that they had. And then also watch that transition from the questions being asked to the principals and the other administration to asking one another. So really quickly became a community base there. It was really nice. How did you set your student teachers up with the teachers? I I've developed a partnership with UW Whitewater, Fred Schrader out there. He's been calling, contacting us when he has somebody. We actually have two student teachers. The second one was added yesterday because there was something that fell through into different placement and gave a call and said, could we help help out? And he said, absolutely. So they just call. There are certain requirements that are needed in order to host a student teacher with longevity, how long you've been at a certain class, and then also a training course. So once I have teachers that have done that, I take a look at what they're coming in, if the student teacher has a specific area of interest, I'll then clear that up and then just really going over their their credentials and figuring out who would best fit.
All done?
All done.
Well, I want to introduce myself formally. My name is Tori Franz. I am your new Brooklyn Middle School principal, so I would like to thank you for approving my hire. Really excited to be here. For the last month and a half or so, I've just been really enjoying getting to know everybody, spending a lot of time with teachers, staffers, members of the admin team to kind of learn who's who, who does what. And I think it's gonna be a phenomenal year. I cannot wait for teachers and students to come back. It's gonna be great. So with that being said, one of the things that we, one of the goals that I have this year is to, you know, continue to develop a positive culture that we already have here and grow that at BMS. And part of that is involving really trying to empower students as much as we possibly can to take hold of their own education in the classroom, but also as leaders of the school as well. So I met with Tina Moore and Justine Kautrow, and I said, hey, I've got this idea. And now it's come to fruition. So we're gonna be hosting a seventh and eighth grade back-to-school kickoff event for interested students. We did invite all seventh and eighth grade students. It's gonna be held on Sunday, August 22nd here from four to eight. And really, we've got some fun team building stuff planned. It'll give me an opportunity to get to know some of our older students in the building right out of the gates and kind of tap into, you know, what they think, you know, what's, you know, what do you like about school? What would you like to see more of? Do you have any great ideas? You know, how can we, how can we use your more leadership position in the school? So we're just super excited for that. And we had so much fun planning that that we just went right onto that first day of school and thinking like, what are we gonna do with everybody else? So our first day back, I think, is gonna be a great way to welcome all students in. Again, we're doing a lot of that team building, getting them reacclimated to the building. But just setting the stage for awesome here, so I cannot wait to get started. Super excited for here.
You're not gonna read your catchphrase there?
Saddle up, Mustang. Yes, and I really liked that we're the Mustangs. I noticed there's like a lot of honey stuff that you can like fill in.
Very good. That sounds exciting. Questions at all for Tori?
No, I know a couple kids who are super excited about going to eighth grade. It really liked the idea. Fun.
All right. Thank you very much. Does this matter?
Yes, so I am just about done closing up the books for the year, and I do have some good news. We realized slightly higher revenue than we had originally budgeted. And we were also able to reduce a lot of our expenses throughout the year for, you know, many different reasons. It was not a typical year. And the end result is, is that we will be increasing our fund balance by about $165,000.
Very good.
Yeah. I'm still waiting for the official stamp from the auditors, but we've been in agreement through the process, so I'm expecting any surprises. When I was analyzing funds 1027, the main factors that created the surplus on the revenue side, we had a net increase in revenue of $30,000 from both enrollment in, which is always exciting to hear. And we got about $20,000 more in special ed aid than we had anticipated. At the time we built the budget, we really didn't know what that percentage was going to be, and we were conservative. So that's good. As far as expenditures, it seems like almost all of the reductions in expenditures were tied to COVID-19 in one way or another. We had about $100,000 less in teacher salaries, and that's in both regular and special ed combined. We had teachers leave positions that we didn't replace. We had some teachers that were on maternity leave. Seems like a lot, but there's a lot of little factors that get us to that amount. We did have $122,000 more in substitute costs, again, COVID-19. We, our fund 27 transfer was $138,000 less. Part of that was from some increased grants, but most of it was really about the decreased teacher salary and benefits. About $100,000 less in employee benefits, about $20,000 less in conferences and travel because nobody could go anywhere. We did have increased supplies and materials of about $20,000, and that was due to COVID-19 and the things we had to, you know, the disposable things we had to purchase. Utilities were down overall, only about $13,000, but that's a good thing. Tech-related supplies were of about $37,000. And then capital expenditures for building maintenance were about $48,000 up from what we had budgeted, but we did that intentionally. The board had made those decisions since we knew we were gonna have a, hopefully, we were gonna have an increase in the fund balance. So with the anticipated savings, oh, I just told you that. Sorry, I should have read. We made some good decisions for capital projects and also student achievement and closing the gaps with some curriculum purchases.
Next one is our annual meeting. Yes, you'll be put on the spot for that one, too.
Yes, right. We're, we're, we're working hard on the budget now, so finish this and go on to the next. A couple of odds and ends first. Just a reminder that the WASB regional meeting will be held on October 20th in Elkhorn. If you would like to be registered for that, like Nicole Mill. Looks like they're going back to onsite format at this point. And that's a dinner meeting. They usually have a short pre-program and then the dinner and then the short post-program if that's what it is to you. We are all gearing up, as you've heard, to in-service next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. We will be starting our in-service time out at Camp Wonderland to do some activities that will help teachers reconnect with each other, reconnect with the profession, and reconnect with our district. That's kind of how it's ranked. So and also gives all of our staff the opportunity to be out at Camp, Camp Wonderland. That's a, that's a thing that we do in sixth grade, and it's one of those things that all staff really should be able to talk about that great opportunity that we have for our, for our sixth graders.
Kelly, is that, is that a normal thing or is this first year?
The first year, yeah. We really, as an administrative team, we really wanted to start this year out differently to kind of set, actually, we want to start last year out differently. This was a last year program that bumped it this year. To get people out of their comfort zones a little bit, out of the the space, you know, separate spaces and be kind of in more neutral space. This year, we're gonna be working, having teachers working greatness groups, both within their building and then cross districts. So there's greatness groups within the building that they'll do some in-building things with. And then like during in-service and PD days, they'll spend some time with their cross build, cross-district greatness groups. So elementary, middle school, teachers and staff will be working together. So, you know, one of our, I think, ongoing goals is to connect our, our buildings and make sure that our staff will connect to each other. As our small district, we still seem to be separated because we're in two different locations. So having teachers intentionally work together over the course of the school year in small groups is gonna be part of that. And the intention really is they'll stay with the same group for the duration of the year, and then we'll get some input on this, but potentially, those greatness groups could shift every year. And so over the course of time that you're in the district, you could come to really get to know, you know, eight or 10 different people a year a little bit more deeply than you will here, you know, just together once a year, twice a year in full district things. So, yeah, I think it's gonna be a.
I want to get some outside of their grade level group, too. So it really, you know, like you said, forces them out of their comfort zone.
Yeah, yeah. We feel like, we talked about, if we're at camp, like there's no, you can't go anywhere. Everybody is together. There's no sneaking off the class. Then hopefully, the weather will be beautiful and we've got some fun activities planned. Should be a nice time. We saw Hugh and Boo's ball today, and so we're trying to figure out how we can incorporate that and, yeah.
Trying to envision that.
It's cool. It's really cool.
Young one say that. I almost said it with enthusiasm. They're probably all thinking, yeah, you were the least in this world. And then next week, also, we have our regular back-to-school nights in both buildings. So the, one of the focuses of the second day is really high-quality instruction. You know, we heard a lot from Tori during her interview about the experiences that she brings in curriculum instruction, and she's really doing a bolt load of the work for art and service, and will be doing a chunk of the presenting. So we're happy about that. Hopefully, she's as happy as we all are.
Saddle up, Mustang.
On Wednesday this week, we'll have our registration time. This is our first year of going with all online registration, so families will be able to pick up their account information on Wednesday. I'm gonna email to them, and then they can either do it on their own or they can come in here and somebody will help them work through the the registration process. We'll also have school pictures here. Remember, we moved those off of the back-to-school nights just to kind of alleviate the crowding. And then our BFO, Talia, do you want to wave your hand? I was with the president of BFO. They have a family bash, a summer bash going on out on the grounds, out on the middle school, and clearly food trucks and inflatables and games and all sorts of fun stuff. So great way to bring our Brooklyn families together and celebrate the end of summer and the beginning of a new school year and hopefully entice them to get their registration paperwork in as, you know, the ultimate goal. And I wanted to share with you some information that came from our, from our survey, family survey that we did. So we surveyed families about a couple different things for a couple different reasons. So one of the things that we surveyed families about was summer school, and so I'm gonna share some information with you about that. We also surveyed families about COVID mitigation strategies and masking in particular, but then also how they felt about our school site being both a vaccination clinic, a vaccination site and a testing site, just to get a feeling. And the reason that we asked for input on any of the COVID things was really to get just a general sense that helps to kind of feed into, you know, your decision-making. Our results on the the masking was 80/20, 84 recommended, not required. Honestly, that was the, almost the same as it was last spring, so I thought that was just kind of interesting. And it's really in line, districts around us, both in Walrook County and then also with our athletic conferences, are ranging 70/30, 80/20. Everybody's kind of all in that same, that same group. And then in addition to the COVID mitigation and the summer school wrap-up, the other piece of things that we surveyed families were, were about tech connectivity at home, both with devices that they had at home and also their level of Wi-Fi connectivity at home. And this we did with the purpose of, we need to collect some of that information for some grant availability that the DTI is providing for us. So, you know, sometimes it's kind of a mishmash, the family survey, debated, you know, do we do it in three separate? But it's a way that sometimes we collect information for our families, but it's always really purposeful so that we get some feedback for different things that we need and to know how to move forward. So we had a lot of good comments about our summer school programs, both when we didn't separate out the virtual academic coaching and the onsite classes. So you can see, we got 47 responses. What did your child enjoy most? Fun classes, time with peers. They like the offsite classes. Remember, we had a class that liked changing the tennis this year, and we did the shore path walk, like the spa class size, it's new activities, and the time with teachers. I included the quote on the bottom, did not attend summer school but worked with a reading specialist. He, the child enjoyed seeing a familiar face. I had similar comments like that throughout the survey for families that enjoyed that virtual academic coaching and the opportunity for their child to work one-on-one with a school staff member and continue to make progress or maintain progress this summer. I also had surveyed summer school staff. And I know that if we were going to offer virtual academic coaching again next year, we have people that would do it because the teachers, and you've heard some of that last month, the teachers had a great experience. It was nice for them to be able to either connect with new students or stay connected with students that they've been working with to really maintain that academic progress throughout the summer. So with the addition of potentially doing some, doing a small group offering, you know, for some of our kids, I think that virtual academic coaching is, will be here to stay. I will, we'll break out that data when we get to our fall testing, so I'm really curious to see, you know, if if we can see an impact of that summer work. So we'll see. This was, I think, a question that's really worth for additional exploration by the administrative team and the board. Would you ever consider having your child participate in summer learning opportunities? So we knew this summer enrollment would be lower, our classes, we had fewer classes, and they weren't in lockstep. You know, we can't do a whole morning of summer school. But we do have, you know, almost 80% of our families that are at least open to the idea of doing some sort of summer learning, which I think at least kind of is reassuring that the classes that we're putting together, like somebody's at least looking or interested in, in having that as an opportunity. So what would you like to see included? I put schedule as a, there were schedule suggestions all over the map. Some people really liked that block of time, like we've done in past years, you know, eight to noon. It's just easier for childcare, you know, where your child is for those four hours. It's easier to drop off and pick up. But I had just as many that said, oh, we like the flexible, just flexible options that come and go than not having to come every day. And so, you know, I think the challenge will be to offer some options of both. I mean, I think that's one of the things that we did this summer, is offered a variety. You need a variety of needs. This may be another option. Had two requests out of 156 responses on this one for transportation. So, you know, a couple of years ago, maybe three, four years ago now, we surveyed our families to see if. So, you know, a couple of years ago, maybe three, four years ago now, we surveyed our families to see if transportation was really a, was really a critical piece for them, being involved in summer school. That it wasn't at that time, but it might be something that we resurvey like in February, March to see if that's something that, that we should consider, because then that could also drive, drive the schedule a little bit. Classes that people would like to see, lot of interest in STEM and science and STEAM, which is STEM with the addition of arts. Sports and outside activities, art and music classes, and then some, some votes for even just some, for me, you know, support reading and math. Lot of talk on the survey feedback about, you know, opportunities for kids to come together in small groups from kids that they don't normally associate with and do activities that they don't normally do as a part of normal academics. So, a lot of good options, I think, for that. And so, we will begin our summer school planning, not this week, but sooner rather than later, you know, once we get into the, the school year a little bit, because, you know, all of those things to really lay them out well and, and give families a heads up on, you know, everybody's looking for that stuff February, March, really. But it's good to have, good, good to have some good feedback, you know, with all of the differentness of this year and the summer and, and really trying, just throwing things out there for a summer program this year. We really got some, kids had some good experiences, families had some good experiences, and we got some good feedback. And I think honestly, it opened, it opened up possibilities for doing some things that we, I don't know if we ever would have come across, you know, virtual academic coaching if it weren't for COVID. You know, the evening classes, the parent-child classes. I mean, I think there's, there's just a lot of, lot of possibilities. Any questions on any of that? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Very good, thank you. Moving on then to board member reports. I personally would like to give a shout-out to BFO since we have a representative here for their work and our staff members also that were down there at the Touch a Truck event. That was a rousing success, I think, and Brookwood was well-represented. I know I came down with my grandchildren, and it was, it was very popular, and we put on a good show. I was very pleased. Thank you very much to BFO and to our staff members that participated in that as well.
Bow, you can bow.
Any other board member reports, comments?
I was going to say the same thing about the BFO. I thought Trace did a great job there.
Yeah, yeah, it was fun. My kids were too young to take part in the games. They would have gotten run over, but that's why we didn't do it. But definitely, it was, it was a popular, popular part of it, yeah.
The newspaper also, I thought, was very.
Oh, yes, yes.
I think that's a, and that will continue to grow as we go forward.
Yeah. Yeah, it was very inviting to read. It was very open format.
It was nice to see the different groups coming in as well.
Yeah.
I feel like we're two-for-two on our, I think that we talked about children.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Very good. Anything else, then? All right. Then our next regular meeting will be September 20th here in this room. We also have our annual district meeting, also September 20th. That'll start at 6:30. Are we going to start our regular at six, or are we going to pop it up? Okay, all right. So, we'll start our regular meeting at six, and then the annual meeting as published will be at 6:30. And board members, we have a work session scheduled for Wednesday, September 15th.
It's also at six.
Yes, that's, okay. Oh, okay, yeah, at six also. Do we have any items for future agenda? We don't have any carryover from tonight. We took care of all business. All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.